Good morning, this is the Knox County Commissioners, Knox County, Ohio, not Tennessee. Regular session September fourth, two thousand twenty-five. We do have our Knox Public Health Commissioner Director. What is the title you have?
Whatever fits for you guys. Health Commissioner, but I have a trouble spelling that half time, so your act works better.
Thank you, Zach. So the floor is yours.
That's what it is about Tennessee, though. The amount of phone calls we still get. And as soon as you answer, right, yeah. I think you're calling them wrong. We get those as well. Oh, good morning, everyone. Happy Thursday. Welcome to the fourth quarter, you know, in them to fall. Football's on, though, so it's a win, right? Our community health improvement plan, so based off our community health assessment. One of our initial strategies was increasing awareness and acceptance into behavioral health substance use disorder. We have launched an initiative with Centerburg Schools. And we are putting a behavioral health counselor full-time at Centerburg. That's part of our planning grant through High Department of Health. We have applied or implementation funding to potentially be able to get also an RN or an LPN onsite and do telemed. And to arm out burning office, not actually put a provider out there, nurse practitioner, for example. But to be able to create that access for acute care, which would help families to be able to pull the kid out or even faculty for that matter, have an upper respiratory infection, as an example. Obviously, that is in collaboration with the school administration to ensure that parents, guardians are aware of any of those encounters, can be part of those conversations, documentation is taken care of. No student can engage in those services without permission from their parents or guardians, and that was under the clear foundation of discussion from day one between administration and Knox Public Health. To ensure that families have full transparency and any of those services is there to be an opportunity, but not necessarily a mandate. We're also collaborating with our Mount Vernon High School, Mount Vernon City Schools, Bill Cedar is in planning phase at this point. Being able to bring in some behavioral health professionals throughout the community. We have a community behavioral health committee that gives us an opportunity to collaborate. And one of our initiatives is to get those professionals in the school building to meet with clients that have already established with whoever that is, maybe it's a new Freedom Center Behavioral Health Partners. Maybe it's with our agency, just a shared space. So that is on the horizon. We have not put the final details to that. But we do have a meeting later this month that Bill, Mr. Cedar is going to be with us to see what those opportunities look like. And it's kind of a new initiative, but it meets those kids where they are in a controlled environment. It's not something that you, little Susie comes down and says, I want to have a counselor. Obviously, these these services will already be engaged at that point. But maybe Susie has a study hall and that works better for the families outside of extracurriculars, you know, crazy that be so they can be seen in schools, that be a win. So we're heading in that direction. We conducted a emotional health forum at the end of April, maybe first part of May at our Nazarene, again, just trying to create awareness. Our next initiative moving into the end part of this year is going to be recognizing triggers of our holiday seasons, right? It's very common. And then suicide awareness. Suicide prevention in particular, we do have a fatality review board, which I know by higher vice code you guys are aware of, and Knox Public Health takes that initiative on for overdoses, child deaths, suicide, and now domestic violence. With suicide, we're averaging two, three, I've seen up to four suicides on a quarterly basis within Knox County. So I think taking that initiative with professionals in our community and having an open forum and as we move out of the winter months and things starting to get nice, right? And everybody's like, oh, I feel good. Well, what about those individuals that don't? And that's when you really start seeing the spike. So we're trying to plant some of those seeds moving into the holiday season and winter months. We onboarded a new psych nurse practitioner, Sierra Haas. She's been with our agencies since July. So she is just now starting to see patients, since we know that is a ongoing gap, not just in Knox County, but across our nation. So we're excited to see Sierra come, and she's from the Ohio State University, which is always a plus. Switching gears on you, obviously in front of you is our upcoming vaccine clinics, just traveling throughout the county to create awareness. And I know Knox pages is gotten that information, I've been able to get that out to the community on social media as well. But we received as of yesterday regarding COVID vaccine for those individuals that would be interested. Pfizer, at this point, is identifying individuals sixty-five and older or individuals five and older with underlying health conditions is what Pfizer is saying. CDC, and particularly the Advisory Committee on Immunization Practices, has not released any of their recommendations at this point. My understanding is they meet on September sixteenth. But the manufacturer Pfizer is outlining that. So those vaccines will be available at those clinics if individuals so wish. Again, we have not, Knox Public Health have not actually put that information out there. We really like to see what the advisory committee at the federal level really comes out with in collaboration with the CDC. I know Pediatrics has kind of put some stuff out there. We at a local level, I'm not here to provide, hey, this is what we think, or here's what one individual is saying. We want all the information. So our community is saying, hey, here's what we have, and here's our recommendation. So that's kind of the timeframe associated.
Is Pfizer the manufacturer of Moderna?
No, those of you didn't.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I saw on the television last night where I think Mr. Kennedy was endorsing Moderna.
So, and again, I have not seen kind of the qualification recommendations on behalf of Moderna. I just saw as a Pfizer, we did receive our initial hundred and eighty doses. I believe they came yesterday, if not today before, but I did receive that. So I wanted to share, hey, the manufacturer for this is saying, thanks. We've had numerous calls. And I get that. We're not here to share misinformation or what our assumptions are. I'm trying to provide concrete detail. So that is what I have in concrete at this point. Knox Health Planning Partnership, as Drenda knows, she was part of our meeting yesterday. We have revamped our planning partnership opportunities and is now going to absorb what was formerly known as Knox Substance Abuse Action Team or KSET. They became a five oh one C three due to the fact that our drug-free communities grant, which was a ten-year grant that really formed the initiative of Knox Substance Abuse Action is coming to an end at the end of this month. So trying to create, what does that mean moving forward? And we had all these different subcommittees. You said, hey, look, why do we have all these five oh one C threes? Let's have it under one umbrella, which is going to serve as Knox Health Planning Partnerships and streamline the professionals in those committees, their times associated to be able to serve as one large membership and then have subcommittees built within it. And then it's one funding stream. It's actually one executive committee and one board of directors. So all those bylaws have been revised, adopted and approved, but it's a step in the right direction. We have a lot of work to do. We have a lot of work to do. With that, one conversation that was brought up yesterday in regards to just concerns, and it was brought up about the emotional health forum and creating awareness and acceptance was AI in particular to maybe those tools being utilized in a manner that is not in the best interest of individuals, right, on a magnitude of different conversations. How do we, like, as professionals, get that information out there? Well, my take on it is, I don't know any subject matter experts to be able to sit on something that changes daily, if not our. And one thing I talked about, Drenda, before we walked in here, and I made a comment to one of our community members yesterday, we have what's called a teen advisory council, right? I mean, they're high schoolers that serve on behalf and trying to talk about mental health and that it's okay, meet those kids where they are as peers. I would argue, and maybe I'm wrong, because I have an IT professional to my left, but the vast majority in this room, sure, Kyle. High schoolers probably know a heck of a lot more about AI and Chat GPT than the average adult, right? And what does that mean about potentially getting a member of teen advisory on a panel in a discussion? What kind of collaboration to raise awareness or at least give us a tactic to say, hey? Although there's a lot of value in technology, and I'm not dismissing that. It's also what you're using it for, like anything else, right? So that that's initiative that I think we really need to pivot and start focusing on.
Yes, especially in light of Adam Rain, the sixteen-year-old young man who Chat GPT assisted in his suicide, his parents are now suing because he gave him methods to commit suicide. And your conversation, he began to see AI as a friend, as a companion, took the place of his parents, of school counselors. And so Chat GPT, AI, it's not a human, it doesn't have a soul. It doesn't understand forgiveness, it doesn't understand relationships. It puts that information out there, which can be so dangerous to children when they're looking for answers. And they're no longer looking to parents, teachers, counselors, instead they're looking to this. So is it's dangerous, it doesn't have a soul, it doesn't, it's not human, and we need that human, which is why I think human connection is all the more important with counseling parents. I was at a ballgame, and I just want to encourage parents, be there with your kids, really connect with them. A little boy sitting sitting next to me, he's just finished his ballgame. He comes up and he says to a friend, my mother's paying no attention to me, she didn't watch me play, she's too busy making selfies and looking at Facebook. And my heart is saying, you know, it's hard enough to parent, we all see fallout of parenting and all these things going on in our culture. But I think we have worse things to see if we don't really quickly recognize, just like the internet, social media, you did not know the dangers that could happen with kids when they start looking for approval from Facebook and likes and clips and things, and it it changes the mindset. Absolutely. And it turns kids away from the real, real protectors, their parents, teachers, pastors, it's not a counseling service.
No, no, there's a lot of value technology. I think we all agree with that.
This is the teen advisory, is that something, is I know that the New Directions has a team.
So that's, that's what this is. And that that was really fueled from our drug-free communities, that ten-year grant that was the origination of KSET in this discussion. So yes, one in six. But yeah, the technology, my wife's an educator by trade, and she'll tell you. I know what kids actually go home and just either do video games or tablet time. First, because it's it's constant, right? So when you have to set an environment and actually understand what's going on without being constantly in a position of entertainment almost. It's not, it's not building in their brain at that point, it's they're bored.
Yeah, and you're so right, parents don't understand the technology. And so it's hard to protect your children from something you don't know. Like, we know how to drive a car, put them in a seatbelt, put them in a car seat, because we understand how to drive a car, but we don't understand how Chat GPT and AI and these, really, they're not on Facebook, they're on other other social media forums that are even more dangerous, concerning, mentally dangerous.
Where we are, we got to re-see that, right? At the end of the day, it's, as I tell my children, it's not that I'm giving you access to the world, the world's not access to you. And that's a two-way street all day.
That's a great way to say it.
So I'm looking forward to case we be really taking a hold under that umbrella and see what that translates to, but it's a more efficient way, absolutely. Lyme disease. Where we are as of end of August of this year is one hundred and forty-nine cases. Same timeline, two thousand twenty-four, at the end of August was ninety-nine cases. So we are continuing to see a climb, which is not shocking, but it is very frustrating and concerning.
Most of those get caught in bands or those late, a lot of them late to the dance as far as treatment goes.
I don't have that information.
Yeah, it's fine.
Yeah, unfortunately. Getting the intel that we have a confirmed case or suspected or confirmed case, and they start, you know, it's a doxycycline, for example, but where they are and their treatment plan, I mean, that's kind of between the patient and their medical professionals. So with our federally qualified Hill Center, we do a three-year competition grant, which is called a Service Area Competition, a SAC. We are in that process now, that'll be due at the end of this month. We have most of that ready to rock and roll, which essentially pulls our service area and how we are doing in regards to meeting patients' needs. We were just shy of ten thousand patients, unique patients, that's not visits in two thousand twenty-four. When we did the service area competition three years prior. So that would have been what, don't call me on this, Cheryl, but two thousand twenty-two, twenty-one probably is when we would have done that year. We were just under three thousand patients. I can get the exact information for you, pull that grant up, but substantial growth, and that really contributes to being that ten over. It really does, being that, being accessible. We had substantial growth in that area. Tricare, you know, we did a press release, so you have access to Tricare, just as a reminder for all our VA friends and family out there. And I did send that over to Mr. Hen Dorn, and he acknowledged that he didn't receive that. So do what we can for, you know, people that protect us at all costs.
They've been pretty good to me in the Tricare, I'll tell you that, that's for sure.
Good. What questions do you have for me?
Well, one of the things I, it's not a question, but it's a you have places in Danville, you have downtown, you have one of the shots in that, but you so if could, could you just give a a review of what all takes place in Danville, because you still have that? Just so people who are watching will know, Health Department is here, they do this. So if you could just do a kind of an overview of the locations, how they find you.
Absolutely, thank you. So Danville, east side of our community, at seven oh six South Market Street, we have our dental practice. It takes Medicaid, Medicare, private insurance, and individuals that are uninsured as well. So that is right across the street from what's that horseshoe drive-through, right there by the park? And then on the Main Street, East Main, next to Conley's Pharmacy, we have a medical clinic that was newly remodeled, well, the commissioners were there to help us ribbon opening. When was that, two thousand twenty-two? We remodeled that, it's three thousand square feet, and we provide all medical services and behavioral health counseling at that location. Actually, the dental practice was in collaboration with the county commissioners. We did purchase that through the county commissioners bonding opportunities and collaboration. Our main location on Upper Gilchrist, Upper Gilchrist Cross Street from Maz's radio station, which recently sold. That is our main site, that's where we do all our public health services. So anything that you need for water, septic, any outreach in particular, infectious disease conversations, we have immunizations, women, infant, children, and dental practice at our main location. And then downtown, we have on West Vine Street, we have our newly remodeled medical clinic that provides primarily just all medical services. Oh, we have a walk-in clinic for any acute care walk-in visits at Foster's Pharmacy. And then South Mulberry, two oh six South Mulberry is our behavioral health. So we do all behavioral health substance use disorder. Do a lot of PMBR, and we're also in partnership with his name is Dr. Brian Barquette, he does a lot of our first responders. And we were able to partner with him. He came out of the Grandville area to be able to do what we can for our first responders, and he's in our location, not part of Knox Public Health, it was just a partnership to get that resource here. They're all us, so it's a good thing. That's a lot, right? I'm trying to get through the county of all the different locations, so I believe I hit them on.
And he also provides services where people from the Health Department go out to individuals' homes. That's right, do counseling. And I know one of those is partially funded from the senior lobby funds.
That's correct.
I know that that program that I think is a very valuable asset to the seniors.
Yeah, so Natasha does an outstanding job, and we've talked about that. I need fifteen more of them. Seriously, to meet the need of our aging population, it's huge. We did apply for community health workers, which isn't quite the same, but same umbrella to get out in the field, and we were advised, I think, maybe Monday or Tuesday this week, that we did not get awarded through the federal government to be able to bring in community health workers. We still have an opening for CHW, but this would have really ramped up our opportunity to navigate out in the community. That's the blessing and the curse of rural community. Right? And you have to be out there mobile, but then financially, how do you sustain those efforts?
And I know this is a good question that you probably didn't prepare for, but can you talk about the communication, the coordination between you and Knox Community Hospital on matters? Because I know that you guys really do interact and do things together and complement each other, but I imagine the community's not aware.
Yeah, 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 yeah. So we're one of five public entity federally qualified health centers or FQHCs. It's not uncommon for FQHCs to not have a great collaboration across the state of Ohio with their local hospital system. It's viewed as potential competition. Our collaborating effort with Knox Community Hospital and Bruce White was at the planning table when they went to apply for this access point through the federal government. We lease their nurse practitioners to come and serve our community under our umbrella. So I mean, that's, if that doesn't tell you anything, then that really should. But no, KCH, look, let's just call it what it is. The vast majority of individuals on which we serve in our community already have access and functional needs that are detriment to them getting outside of our county to get care, right? So being able to funnel primary care that we offer and then get them to KCH for any type of specialty. That really bridges gaps for individuals in lieu of them saying, well, you got to travel to Mansfield, you got to travel to Columbus, right? They're already having difficulty time traveling to the east side of the city. Now we're expecting them to travel outside of the county. Not saying that that doesn't always happen, but that partnership really is what's trying to bridge the gap between vulnerable populations and getting them access. It's their choice, where do you want to go, right? But it's not, hey, don't go to the hospital. No, it's, hey, we're here. What can we do to be able to offset any potential needs that you may have, may need? But yeah, no, I, our collaboration is paramount. Because it has to be, it is for the community, and that's the lovely part of it being a public entity, FQHC, rather than a standalone nonprofit, Zach's opinion, and a community hospital, right? Both for the community to be able to meet that need rather than trying to take patients. Not what it's tailored to do. And that's the safeguarders, it's part, it's out on a public entity umbrella.
Barry, any questions for you, please?
No, I do not.
No, appreciate you putting together that photo, and I think it's a great idea to have a team that since teams can relate what they're actually, how it's impacting them. So that's, that's great, because I don't think we're on top of this as a, as a federal government, state, or local, and we better get on it, or we're going to see.
I think it's a fair assumption. Hopefully, we can make that work. We'll see. But they're definitely ground level, right? I mean, they're, they're boots on the ground. They hear or see things that we're not. I mean, let's call it what that is. But we were all, we were all high school at one time, right? So we knew, we knew a little more about things that the average adult didn't.
Right. But this is escalating to a place that's out of control.
Tell that Natasha girl that one of the commissioners smiled with you.
Awesome. Well, Zach, thank you.
Thank you.
Cheryl, always, you got to follow up with me.
Thanks, Zach.
Thank you. Wow, thanks for saving the day, man.
Yeah, no problem. Maybe Kelly's to lay in on that AI. How we utilize the good parts and not let it destroy people's lives.
Like any new technology.
All right, so are we ready? All right, so we have a frame of notice of intent for the lead entity designation for demolition in sight revitalization program. So we're going to, the last time we did this, we had ADF handle that to the brownfield money and that kind of stuff.
Yes.
So this came down that there's under House Bill ninety-six of the General Assembly, there's some additional funding, and so this again, will allow ADF to be our administrative support for the county on that, on our behalf.
Yeah, and they did do an excellent job doing that to make sure we stay kosher.
Yep, so this letter is just you signing that and sending this. We'll send this back to the State of Ohio Department of Development, and then it has Sam Philkins as the point of contact at their development base.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Your say I.
Then we have approved the Office of Community Development. This is the two thousand twenty-four Community Development Program, amended scope of work and budget for the two thousand twenty-four allocation. And this is relating to park improvements in the village of Danville. And there's nothing to sign, this is just to allow Amy Shoppin to submit this on your behalf.
Most of it is billed us.
I did, I did a knee sign for that, but still.
Motion is.
In those favor, say I.
Okay, then we have an advertisement for legal notice. This is for the Department of Job and Family Services. And this is relating to the Children and Family First Council, so I'm updating annual fiscal report for public inspection.
As much you can prove.
Second.
Those favor say I.
And then we have a memorandum of understanding between this amendment, the memorandum of understanding between Job and Family Services, Children and Family First Council, the Knox Public Health, and this is relating to the Family Team Support Coordinator position. And this will terminate the existing contract effective September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five. Motion to approve.
A second.
Those favor say I.
Then we have a memorandum of understanding with Job and Family Services, Children and Family First Council, and Knox Public Health. This is related to Family Team Support Coordinator in the amount of seventy thousand dollars. And this is from October one, two thousand twenty-five through June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-six. Payment at a rate of forty-two dollars and eleven cents per hour. Motion to approve.
A second.
Those favor say I.
We have a utility permit for Looking Row Electric Butler Road. And this is in Pike Township.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Those favor say I.
And another utility permit, Looking Row Electric Bealer Mill Road, Mill Road, and this is in Brown Township.
Motion to approve.
Second. Those favor say I.
And then we also received an item, just a fifth minute from Liberty Township, about a public hearing for variance working for proposed Dollar General store in Mount Liberty. I think they're just notifying us, and Penny, it does say in here return receipt for their records.
Yes, I can sign for that.
You sign for that, okay. So we're good there. So you just, you're going to put that in the minutes that we received that. Okay, and then we have transfers and bills for today. Just kind of quick update on projects, the back entrance, that modern builders this morning. The panels were delivered for the back of the building and around the additions. Those will start going up soon, I think. We're going to start with the lower areas, and then a crane will need to be brought in to get to the back area. If your flooring is scheduled for around the seventeenth, the tiled floor will be put down around the seventeenth. The painting is done, I think the next week is going to be the inspection of the upper ceiling area where the HVAC and that kind of stuff with the state. Once that's approved, then they'll, yeah, with the tiles and finish up the electrical. And we should be good to go, so pending weather, we're hoping then the end of the month. So we'll see if we get that timeline. But we will need to do, once the paint holds around, then we'll have to finish up the roof and then pour concrete, let the concrete settle. But it's it's getting closer.
So what's your estimated date?
We're hoping by the first of, first of October.
Turning key.
That's what we hope, yeah. I mean, now that it hasn't rained in a month, it'll probably, today, the paint will show up and it's raining. So, no, we'll see, but that's, I would say we're on pace, if all goes well. The field just being the final, we're going to do the crane, and then back the crane out, then they'll bring the concrete in and do that work and let it cure, and then we can open it back up. So we're getting close. Yeah, we're getting close.
And then we'll be very nice when we get there.
And I believe all the demo work is done at the warehouse. So that, once that is done, and the land bank makes that payment out of the demo money, then we'll purchase that building from the land bank, so that should be hopefully coming this month. I would think we could get that and take.
I feel like we'll be in there by the end of October, but I was hoping the end of December.
And I think Penny and I have a reconstruction meeting with modern builders, the architect on the sheriff's project for Tuesday next week. And then we'll get, they'll be ready to roll after that, that meeting. It should be set, and that should, that project should get rolling.
So Jason, I have a question, because it seems to be asked of me more than, but anyway, what, what is going on?
Uh but anyway, what, what is going on with uh some of the rural county uh internet systems, they? I keep seeing these permits to do so, but I haven't, apparently it's not for cable and most of the rural areas.
Yeah, a lot of these, so. There was back post COVID, there was a lot of state. Money that was put out there, you know, through the feds, I think, for. Different. High speed internet companies to run lines and do some things. It really did involve the county.
Right.
We, we did have a couple meetings with one group that told us like this, the outside centerburg, they were gonna be running. But for the most part, it doesn't involve us other than maybe their phone utility permits. Um. It wasn't money that came through the county. It was really a state thing to expand broadband. I don't, I don't think we've ever had any report back of like. What are the areas? At one point, they, they kind of gave us a heat map and showed us areas of the county that were lacking in high speed internet. But I don't think we've seen anything back from the state that says where those voids have been filled in. Um and I think we hear that a lot. There's some people that'll call in and say, well, it's. It's at the end of the street, but they won't bring it to me unless it's, you know, seven thousand or ten thousand dollars to run the line. And I, you know, we can't force Spectrum to do that. So I think it's when they have enough customers that it benefits them to run it down another street, they will.
Right.
But I'm sure that for the people it impacts, it's frustrating for sure, yeah. But uh, but I guess in short, Barry, we haven't seen, that might be a question that we could ask. Our state laws later.
That's where.
Just say, is there a new kind of map that shows the areas of our county that are lacking? Broadband, so we would at least know where those scares are. And how is that better than it was three years ago when the grant money started showing up? Because they were basically subsidizing the cost to get it out into rural areas.
Well, I'll ask finer about that because I have a couple of questions for him. Yeah, it seems like every time I go to uh a meeting where there's community involvement. It's like, hey, where where's the, the internet in the rural area of Knox County? And I'm like, yeah. You gotta climb the pole like Greenacre.
Yeah, I don't think it rolled out as fast as what a lot of people thought. Yeah, when this grant stuff was being, they thought, well, it's gonna go everywhere. No, it's just. Yeah, I don't think that's happened. And the couple of them that met with us or the one that met with us, it was not Spectrum. It was another high speed internet company. Somewhere they were going was outside Centerburg running a line.
Well, they're gonna go like moral county line and.
Yeah.
Over a night or it, but we did have um one that was down in the Blayton's bird uh area. That was going to brought six to. The deliveries, lots of there, but haven't had a feedback then.
But it doesn't sound like, like from those when you're running it up main roads, they're not really. We're picking up one or two customers. That's probably still not gonna happen for a while.
Wonderful, thank you. Anything else? I don't have anything else for you. Yeah, Barry?
Thank you.
Did? Okay. Well, take motion for a journey then.
Motion is true.
We could get a standard, sir. Thank you, everyone. Have a great weekend.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kyle, for any utility there.